Welcome to the Brisbane City Council meeting of February 21st. I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 7:36. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Please note for the record that all council members are present except for Council Member Conway.
Okay, that brings us to adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us to oral communications, number one. I do have a large amount of slips, but they all seem to be about the school studies. See if you have something else other than that they'd like to speak about, please come on up. Okay, seeing no hands. We'll move on to the consent calendar. I do know we have a few adjustments. I'm going to go ahead and pull item H at the request of a citizen who asked that this be described a little bit further. And I understand we have another item that's going to be pulled as well. Let's see.
I believe staff has removed item I.
Yes, we were requesting that item I be removed to another future agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion for items A through G?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll go ahead and address item H this time. If staff can just provide a little bit of background on this item and fill the public in on some adjustments that are going to be happening with our city attorney.
Sure. Glad to. Thank you, Adam Mayor. As I think the council is aware and some members of the community that our city attorney, Michael Roush, indicated to us last year that he wanted to dial back a little bit in terms of his day-to-day in the city attorney role. However, he brings a tremendous amount of experience to the job and also working on a number of key issues that the city is continuing to work on and will be in the next few years. So he agreed, I don't think totally reluctantly, but a little bit reluctantly, to continue on working with the city and will be working with city staff on a number of issues. However, in terms of the actual city attorney position, this contract tonight is to identify Tom McMaro, who's been working with us from Manatt Phelps &amp; Phillips Law Firm, who's been our Sacramento lobbyist, Sacramento-based attorney for the last couple of years. And he will actually be sitting in on the council meetings and will be the city attorney and will be the person that we run all through legal issues through. So we've got the benefit of both attorneys and we feel that we have kind of the best sweet spot in terms of legal services moving forward, especially over the next few years when we realize that there's going to be some key issues before the city council, before the community in terms of development of the Baylands and things of that nature. So I can answer any other questions that you'd like, but that's basically the arrangement.
No questions, right? Okay. Thanks, Clay. That brings us to presentation.
So I- I'll make a motion to approve item H.
Oh.
I'll second it.
Oh, right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that brings us to the presentation. I understand we have a couple of presentations, so whoever's starting, feel free to come up.
So let me just do an introduction first. So back in July of 2018, the city council approved the city manager or authorized the city manager to enter into agreements to do a study for looking at the impact of the Baylands on school districts and on education in general. The city entered into agreements with two separate firms because they have different expertise. We entered into an agreement with the Ryland School Business Consulting and Capital PFG that those two firms have a lot of experience in looking at the impact of development on school districts, the number of students that are there, how quickly students get into the schools, what the cost to students are, what the impact on the school districts would be. So we thought that was a very good resource for that. And we also entered into an agreement with Oka and Moore Law Firm to look at the legal side of what are the opportunities that there are for education within with the Baylands, with Brisbane, with Bay Shore Elementary School District, and with Jefferson High School District. What are the synergies that can get created as we go forward in the development? The city council at the time thought having the information available for the public and for everybody would be a very good idea because the more information we have about what the impact on the Baylands is going to be on all aspects of our lives is better. So that's why we entered into both of those. So tonight we have presentations from both of those groups. Kathy Domenico from Capital PFG will be presenting on the financial side, and then Tom Griffin and Ralph Oka will be presenting on the legal side. And then when both of those are done, there will be a presentation by the Skyline Community College because they're also interested in how can they be participating in bettering and increasing the ability for people to get education within Brisbane and within this area of the county. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kathy.
And do you need copies of the presentation? Are they in front of you?
They're on our screen.
They're on our screen. All right, perfect. Well, I'm Kathy Domenico with Capital PFG. And Madam Mayor and Council, I'm pleased to be here tonight to go through with you an overview of some of the impacts on the local schools from the perspective of new development. And we're going to run through this presentation in concept. As we are, we're at the point of the development process where the developer's going to revamp their specific plan. So we're using a set of assumptions and giving you some information from a high-level perspective that can be fine-tuned over time as more concrete information develops through that specific plan process. But we want to give you an opportunity also to ask questions and understand the impacts of the project on schools, or the potential impacts on schools. Let's see. That's not going for me. Oh, it did now. Okay. It's a little delay there. So just when we think about it, new residential development means new students. Conceptually speaking, that's the impact to the schools is new students. But when we're analyzing what new students means to a school district or to your situation to multiple school districts, there are capital impacts and there are operational impacts. I'm going to walk through both of these areas. And again, all impacts identified are really preliminary in nature to give you a conceptual understanding of what to expect. These numbers are not set in stone at this point, but will help you understand the order of magnitude and some of the questions to ask as you go through the development process. One of the first things we look at to determine new students is what's called a student generation rate. It's simply a measure of the average number of public school students from housing units. I want to stress the word "public school" because in this area, you actually have a unique situation compared to other parts of California where there are a large portion of students that don't attend public schools. They go to private schools or charter schools or alternative, have alternative education. So we do need to call out for the purposes of the school districts, the public schools. So when we're talking about student generation in this situation, we've actually made some adjustments for students that are going to private schools because they would not be accommodated by the school districts. Student generation rates are not stagnant. They vary over the life cycle of a housing unit. I like to call it a wave effect. So oftentimes, right when housing is developed, when a lot of new houses go in, you've got a peak generation, a wave, and it averages out over time. I'm actually going to show you a graph in a moment showing that. Well, from a school district perspective, you have to accommodate all of those students at peak and on average. And when you're building facilities, we need to take that into consideration because you need to have enough space for all the students at peak. But if it averages out over time, you also don't want to overbuild. So there's a thought process that goes into that, and there are some solutions that a lot of districts use to accommodate that peak versus average student generation. It's driven by the type of housing unit. So if we think about what we're building in the Bay Area, are we looking at through single-family homes? Are we looking at apartments, condos, townhomes, flats? Those all actually have different student generation rates. You think about the people that are moving into those units, they may not have school-age kids, they may not have school-age kids during the time that they're living in the unit, or they may have school-age kids coming somewhere down the line, but they're not right there when they move in. They may have school-age kids for a little while and then move somewhere else so that you see an increase in enrollment at the elementary grades, but not necessarily at the high school grades. These are all things that we analyze when we're looking at student generation because, again, that impacts the capital needs of the school districts and the operational needs of the districts. And I kind of jumped ahead on the last one, which is they're analyzed by grade level because we need to look at where these kids are going to be and the facilities that you need to serve K-5 students versus 6'8" students versus high school students are actually different. So those are all things that are evaluated as part of a student generation rate analysis. Looking at the conceptual student generation rate plans from this development project, if we're looking at somewhere between 1,800 and 2,000 units, we also don't know exactly how many kids because it depends on what the absorption of the units is going to be. So you kind of have a blue line and a red line here. If we have fast growth, you have residential units coming in pretty quickly, you could see a spike, a peak in enrollment, followed by a drop-off where it kind of averages out over time. It's kind of the wave effect I was referring to. If it's slow absorption, the students may come a little slower, you may have a small peak, and it would really just reach average and kind of stay in an average over time. So the pace of growth makes a difference, especially to schools. This is just kind of one sample scenario. As we're looking to determine what's really coming out of this particular development project, we would look for data in the specific plan related to the mix of units to really get a better idea of where that peak is going to be. But based on a mix of townhomes and rental apartments, which is something I know has been contemplated, you're not going to see substantially high generation rates like you would if it was, say, a single-family home. So that's something to keep in mind. Actually, the San Francisco Unified recently did a student generation rate study where they looked at some of their newer development areas and did some projections for other developments going in. Think Candlestick Point is what they're looking to estimate what the housing units are going to be and the student generation would be. They're seeing generation rates that really are well below the state averages, maybe even reaching only .3 students per household, where on average the state says .7 students per household. So that's just something to keep in mind as we get further through the development planning process, what those units are drastically going to impact the number of students, which will carry out to have a big impact on the schools. When we think about numbers from this project, it could be on the low end. We could be looking at 200 elementary students, that's K-5, could be maybe a little more than that, 350 on average. That's K-5 students. That's not really a full school necessarily if we're looking on the 200-student end. But if you think about when we reach over 300, the existing Bay Shore enrollment is about 380 students. So we could see them doubling their enrollment. They also include middle school students, so they have 6'8". We could see another 100 or so middle school students on average. So we could see a true doubling of their existing student enrollment, which, again, when you think from an operational and capital side, that could be, those could pose some challenges for that school district. At the high school side, we might be seeing 150 additional kids on average. That's not a lot for a high school when you're thinking about how large high schools are. So just thinking order of magnitude, this is going to have more of an impact to the elementary school than it will to the high school. Those are the average numbers. Peak could be substantially higher. And we look here, you could reach almost 800 students for a couple of years, that's K-12, or even more depending on what's built. How do we accommodate this high peak enrollment that's going to average out over time? So these are all the questions to be asked. And I'm going to walk through some of those concepts today, but I still think there's going to be a lot of unanswered questions because we just don't have all the detail just yet. So capital impacts, we're going to start with the capital impacts. New students, that'll go, there we go. New students mean more classrooms and may mean more schools. It's definitely going to mean more classrooms. You're going to have enough students here, especially at the elementary level, where we need to think about how do we expand existing facilities in order to accommodate those students? Although, we'll talk later, there is a little bit of room at the Bay Shore School District right now, but probably not enough to accommodate all the students anticipated from that development. Analysis of projected enrollment compared to school capacity is done to determine that. Well, when you say "school capacity," everybody kind of expects a set number. What is the school capacity? Is it 600? Is it 550? Although schools are built to a capacity, practically speaking, the way schools operate really doesn't lend itself to a hard number. There is some flexibility there, and there are some restrictions there. For example, the students don't come in nice neat packages by grade level where they can load their classrooms to full capacity so that every seat is taken. It just doesn't really work that way. You may end up with 24 kindergartners and 40 second graders, and you've got to figure out how to divide that up so they're not filling classes all the way up to their capacity. So that's a challenge. The other thing to think about is special programs, especially when we're thinking of a community like the Bay Area where you have a lot of technology influence and they want to have maker spaces and robotic spaces. They need to have classroom space for these special programs that may not be occupied 100% of the day. So there may be classroom spaces that, when you think about school capacity, fill up as classrooms, but they cannot load students 100% of the day. So when you're talking about students from new development coming in, we may have a challenge in actually filling that capacity all the way up. So those are, again, when we talk about capacity, there's a little bit of a moving target there as well. Talked about that peak generation versus the average generation. You want to have permanent classrooms for average student generation, but you've got to combine that with the base enrollment trends. Do you have a declining enrollment population where maybe there's more space because students are leaving the district for some reason, and you can fill it up with students from new development? Or do you have an increasing enrollment situation? That's something that goes into consideration on what, how many classrooms need to be constructed. Peak housing is typically accommodated by interim housing, class size adjustments or attendance boundary adjustments. But when you have a one-school school district, that poses challenges as well because they can't just overflow kids to another school site. So those are some of the facilities challenges districts face. And I kind of went into the "school capacity is not a hard number" concept because that's something that a lot of people from the outside don't grasp when it comes to school districts is a school's built for a capacity of 600, why don't you have 600 kids there? It's not always that simple. Let's talk a little bit about school construction costs. And schools are expensive. The bottom line is schools are expensive, and the more elaborate a facility you have, of course, the more expensive it's going to be. But I wanted to give you some examples of school construction projects just to help give you an idea about what school construction costs. So just some elementary school examples. In 2017, Bay Shore completed their rebuild of their school, and I think it was estimated about $25 million for 568 student capacity. It's about 47,000 square feet. Inflate that a couple of years, could we be reaching $30 million? Sure, probably with the way inflation's worked over the last couple of years. Napa Junction Elementary is rebuilding their school two miles down the road. They had to acquire some land, and they're estimating their project to about $36 million for a school to accommodate 448, 450 students, about 43,000 square feet.
If I may, I just have a question. So the Bay Shore School is $25 million. You think that maybe it would go up to $30 million, but here you have this Napa project that's-
Thirty-six.
You know, it's less, and it's at $36 million.
Right.
And our land isn't, you know, easy land to develop.
Exactly. So here's what I-
I mean, we're looking at a lot more than $30 million.
I think you're, if you're including land-
Probably close to $40 million.
And we, I actually want to talk about that because there's a construction cost, soft costs, and then the land cost. So if you're going to add land cost into the equation, your $25 million gets a lot more there, too. So your land cost, and if you think about the typical school size, school site size for an elementary school, is about 10 acres. That's for a full-size elementary. You could shave that off maybe to eight acres if you're doing a slightly smaller elementary school, but if you're at $1 million an acre, which I don't think is that out of this world, you could end up adding eight to 10 million onto a project cost. I have a school district in Southern California, coastal, wealthy coastal community. They just bought themselves a 10-acre school site for $14 million. So that's just an idea of what it is. That doesn't include the site development, getting the school buildable. It doesn't include the hard costs and it doesn't include the soft costs.
So is the difference here because of what's going on in Napa? There's a high demand for construction? Is that why you're seeing the difference, or where is, why do you think that there's a difference?
I think it's what the facilities are, and that's another point.
I see.
This elementary school in Southern California I'm referring to has a price tag of about $50 million. For an elementary school, about 550 students. They're building a school with indoor-outdoor learning spaces. It's got roll-up doors so that the classrooms can actually go in and out. They've got built-in technology labs. They have indoor two-story facilities. It looks like a college, I've got to tell you.
My God, I'm trying to go back to the first grade now.
But my point is, depending on what you're building, there's a huge variation in some of these costs. But schools are expensive. So when we're talking about needing new facilities, we need to build that into the initial conversation so that they can be accommodated upfront. You can't catch up at the end. Yeah. I actually want to go to middle schools because it gets more shocking. Middle schools, here's a couple of middle school examples. There's another middle, a reconstruction of a middle school in Morgan Hill area that has a project cost of about $50 million. It's a reconstruction of most of the school, but it does not include a gymnasium or auditorium, so it doesn't include a pretty substantial support building. And it's coming in at $50 million. That's about 80,000 square feet. If we're thinking of middle schools, in this area, you have a kind of a K-8 middle, K-8 elementary to middle school. These are comprehensive middle schools with big science labs and athletic facilities, and they're about 25 acres. So that's not a K-8 school that would be more condensed and have more limited middle school facilities. In this situation, I don't envision this development being large enough where you're going to have elementary school, middle school, high school, all needed to support it. So these numbers start to feel large. I think they can, they already are large, but they feel worse. I think you can condense this into maybe a K-8 facility and look at what the high schools, how the high school students can be accommodated. I also want to give the example, it's American Canyon Middle School, just because it's in the same area as that Napa Junction one. They're looking at a $45 million middle school of 500 to 600 students. If you go back and look at the size of that elementary school, the elementary school was about 450 students. So it's not going to, not going back for me. So it's not going to accommodate that many more students. But the reason the middle school's so much more expensive is because of all those other support facilities that they include in middle schools. Science labs are expensive to build, gymnasiums are expensive to build, and the land is more expensive because you're building on bigger facilities. So these are things to weigh. Once there's more information from the specific plan, you can scout out what that facility needs to look like and how do we provide the educational program for these students and what do the facilities need to look like to support that program. Going even bigger is high schools. I always, the high school in my neighborhood is actually being built right now. The price tag is about $200 million on a brand-new high school, comprehensive high school that's supposed to accommodate about 2,000 students. That includes the stadium, athletic fields, everything, but that's 2,000 students. We went back a few slides here. We don't think we're going to have that many high school students, and I'm not even sure we have that many high school students in the entire city. So put that in perspective, you aren't going to need a 2,000-student high school locally. In fact, we were talking about the students generated from the development project. The development project may not really generate enough kids for a full high school, but the development itself could be an opportunity for some type of small high school program that could locally benefit the area. So I want to bring up this Menlo Park Small Tech High School because that might be something that would be considered here. They're building a small high school for about 400 students at a projected cost of about $51 million. That's something where it may not have all the comprehensive support facilities of some of these bigger high schools, but could adequately serve a student population and have a specialty program like a technology school that could serve a community. If you're going to go with a full comprehensive high school, there's one being built right now in Roseville, about a 1,200-student capacity at about $122 million. You really aren't going to have a comprehensive, enough program for a comprehensive high school with much lower enrollment. So if you're looking at small schools, you're looking at specialty programs, you're not really looking at these comprehensive high schools that need about 1,200 students or more to run. If you're just putting in buildings, I actually want to bring up, Woodside High is building a STEM building. Science, technology, engineering, and math. Sometimes you hear STEAM or STREAM, which includes research in it and arts. These STEM buildings are really popular right now. They're building a STEM building, so a classroom wing essentially of about 10,000 square feet for just over $13 million.
What about a K through 12?
So you would see that more in a specialty program scenario, and then if you're looking at specialty programs, what are you delivering? So I could picture, if you were going to lay out something like that, you would want to define what that program is, figure out how many kids would be accommodated in that program, figure out the square footage per student, and then the support buildings you would need. And then with that, what's the additional acreage you would need in order to support it? So if you're going to go down that path, you're really creating something unique. And the per-square-foot construction cost is one thing, but what else are you delivering? I mentioned that elementary school in Southern California, $50 million price tag on that because they're putting all this other stuff in it. It's really, it depends on what you're going to build with it. But those ideas, as you start going up, we can figure out what the students are going to be from the specific plan, and then we can start to put some of these ideas together and figure out what it looks like, and then put together some cost estimates to support it. That's really the typical process that we would follow. Oh, I didn't need to skip. So when we think about that, we also want to think about capital funding sources. So schools have capital funding sources that are similar to what you would have at the city, but a little bit different, and they have some restrictions on just their ability to negotiate additional funding from a development community. Most of the school districts I work with that are trying to get, trying to work on schools to support new development actually have a pretty close relationship with their city, and the city is really facilitating a process of getting schools built and getting schools funded in order to meet their development objections, objections, objectives, excuse me, as well as the school objectives. So when we think about school funding in California for capital purposes, I'm going to categorize it into three general categories. I didn't mean to skip ahead. Developer or mitigation fees, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, state funding and local funding. And I'm going to go through these in general, but these by themselves are about two-hour-long conversations, so I won't go through the primer on them. But these are, in general, the funding sources available to schools for capital programs. The first is developer or mitigation fees. So unlike city government, school districts actually have a statutory developer fee that is capped at the state level. So school districts throughout California can charge a developer fee. Right now, the cap is at $3.79 a square foot for residential construction and $0.61 a square foot for non-residential new construction. It doesn't matter whether you're in the Bay Area, Southern California, or in the middle of the valley, that's the fee that you're able to collect. You can naturally think that there might be some problems with the Bay Area construction costs compared to the valley costs and how much the schools get. That is a legitimate concern, and those fees are split between elementary and high school. That's the most a school, the schools can collect in an area unless they can justify alternative fees or negotiate mitigation agreements with the development community. That is possible, but frankly, the leverage actually comes at the city level, not the school district level, and the city usually helps facilitate an alternative mitigation plan. In looking at the project, the Baylands project, again, we still don't, we don't have a specific plan, but based on kind of some of the preliminary numbers that we're looking at, we're estimating that that project will generate about $10 to $15 million of developer fees in today's dollars. The school costs we were talking about are in today's dollars. So it's not, it'll pay for a little bit, might pay for a STEM building, but it's not going to pay for a full school.
Is that amount over the life, over the complete build-out of the project not-
Yes.
Over-
Yes. And actually, that brings up a very good point, which is cash flow.
Thank you.
Because that also includes the commercial development. So if the commercial development's coming later, residential units come first, houses could all be built, kids could all be there, and they still haven't generated that much money. And the money's coming in over time. So typically, a school district would have to borrow in order to tap into that future funding stream, which has its own risks. So there's a cash flow challenge with developer fee collections and the ability to fund schools when they're needed. I feel like it's all doom and gloom, and I don't mean for it to be. I just want to make sure you have the information on the challenges of school funding. But that brings up the state. The state has their new construction program, which provides grant funding based on student eligibility. Grants must be matched with local funding, and developer fees are eligible matching funding source. The eligibility is based on the available capacity of existing school sites, and then as students come in from new development, they first fill up those available seats. Then if there's, they need to house more students, that's when the eligibility calculation starts in, and the state gives a grant amount per student. The grant amount is based on a state formula for available capacity and a state formula for student generation. So the state formula for student generation helps districts in the Bay Area because you tend to see lower student generation than the state average. But the state formula for available capacity tends to hurt districts in the Bay Area because they have a lot of specialty programs, and they fill up classrooms with specialty programs, and the state loads those and says, nope, those are available capacity. and the state loads those and says, nope, those are available capacity. You, you've got to fill those up before we're going to give you a dime for additional classrooms. The state, we're estimating that, that this project would generate eligibility at the elementary level only, that the high school actually has enough capacity in their existing schools to accommodate students from the state perspective, and so there would not be eligibility at the high school level. And we're estimating about 8 to 10 million of state funding eligibility at the elementary level combined with the developer fees. So again, maybe another STEM building in there. The other challenge with state funding, and we talked about cash flow a moment ago with developer fees, state funding right now is more of a reimbursement program. In fact, we, the schools would need to wait for a future state bond authorization in order to fill out an application, and then that money tends to come after the construction's completed. So they have to have their own local funding sources in place in order to begin and actually finish the construction of projects before getting their state reimbursement. Local funding is really the most common way of schools delivering their capital improvements, and it's usually then augmented by the other two funding sources, the developer fees and the state funding. General obligation bonds, I think everybody's pretty familiar with. That is a pretty common mechanism for school districts to use to fund school facilities. It does require registered voter approval. They have a 55% vote threshold versus cities or counties or other special districts that have a two-thirds threshold. They can also adopt community facilities districts. So schools can collect CFD taxes and issue bonds. That's another common, common mechanism for a development area where a CFD is layered on top of the development, and then the school district issues bonds. So that's usually in lieu of developer fees and helps solve some of the cash flow problems. That's something that would, that could apply in this situation. General fund is the other source of funds, and I'm pretty sure every school district that I've ever worked with has said, we don't have enough money for salaries, benefits, operations, we really don't have a lot to carve out for facilities, but some do. Just some general comments, and this, we've kind of talked about this along the way. At the elementary, at the elementary level, we may not have enough students to occupy a full, comprehensive school, but it would have a substantial impact on the Bay Shore school. Their school capacity is about 570 students. Their 2018-19 enrollment was about 380 students. That's back from October. It's a point in time when they actually do their calculation. Enrollment kind of changes as the year goes on, so that's not necessarily an exact number, but it's a good metric to see kind of where their capacity is. Right now, they have room for, say, 190 students, but you don't know how that's going to look over time. Are they going to increase, are they going to decrease? At the high school level, the existing Jefferson High campuses can likely accommodate the expected students from the project, but when we're thinking about a big development project, that could be used as an opportunity to serve a local community, and you could use, and I know later today you're going to talk about some creative ideas that could be implemented at the high school level. But a development project is an opportunity to create a specialized high school to serve your local students. So although we aren't necessarily, the development isn't necessarily driving the need for a full facility, it can be a good opportunity for that. And frankly, the statutory developer fees and state funding is simply not going to be enough to fund the quantity of facilities needed if you're going to do a specialty high school combined with expanding elementary, or if you're looking at something like a K-12, there would likely need to be an augmented funding source that could come in the form of alternative mitigation fees, a CFD, something else along those lines. I don't want to lose sight of the operational impacts. Capital is, order of magnitude is quite expensive, so it tends to overwhelm us, but I don't want to forget about the operational impacts, because of course, new students, mean teachers and other support funds are needed to support their education. So we have to look at the operational impacts, and although new development means more property tax revenue, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to offset additional operating costs, and that's partly because of how schools are funded. So traditionally, schools are funded from a combination of local property taxes and state aid. There's a formula that's calculated through, it's called the Local Control Funding Formula, that determines the total amount of funding that schools receive. Some districts receive local property taxes in excess of that funding formula amount, and those, and they don't receive state aid. Those are called basic aid or community-funded districts. And there's a little graphic at the bottom kind of showing the basic aid district funding where property taxes kind of dump into that LCFF funding bucket, and then to the extent that there are more property taxes than that formula sets, they overflow into another bucket, and the local district gets to keep that money, that property tax money, and they, they're not funded by state aid. Those districts are funded in a more similar manner to other public agencies. So it's more of what you'd be familiar with, more familiar, more like special districts that have that property tax funding stream, so they're just dependent on the property tax revenues. But not all your local districts are basic aid. So Jefferson actually has been teetering back and forth between yes, basic aid and no, basic aid for, for a few years. So you don't know in the future if they're going to continue to be basic aid, or they're going to drop back down into non-basic aid status. They're, so they're, Brisbane Elementary, oh, I have it on the next page. Brisbane Elementary is currently basic aid, and Bay Shore is currently state-funded. So you've got kind of a mix of things happening here locally. So although at build-out, the Baylands project could generate 25 to 32 million of property tax revenues, that's annual revenues for schools, which would be split between the agencies, you don't know if it would kick the districts into basic aid status or not. And what does that mean? So when we say it's more funding, well, if they are not basic aid, it really is no more funding than they would otherwise see, because they would still get their LCFF funding, they'd get their property tax revenue, it would just be backflip, they're backfilled from the state, they would really get the same whether the development project was there or not. If they are basic aid, you have to look at that student, that funding to student ratio. So is that property tax revenue per student at the same ratio or a greater ratio than it is today? So there could be property tax benefits from the project. Again, it depends on how many kids we're seeing, depends on ultimately what's built and the price point of what's built. So there's a lot of things that we need to consider to determine whether a new development project actually generates more operational funding for schools. So just from the financial perspective, this isn't going to be a surprise. We need more information to really give you more concrete information about what the financial impacts are of this project on the schools. Helpful information, the number of residential units. We're kind of in that 1,800 to 2,000 range. That's pretty, that's a pretty close range. I don't know that we need to fine-tune that piece as much as the type of residential unit. Townhouses look a lot different than apartments, which look a lot different than flats. So we need to see what that is in order to determine how many kids are coming out of it. The estimated absorption schedules, are we looking at fast growth, slow growth? When does the commercial come in? That impacts the property tax revenue side. So at the timing of commercial, and it should be up here, but it is not, which is the price point of units. From a property tax perspective, that's going to have a big factor, but it also drives who's moving into the units. The price point does have a direct correlation to whether there are students or not in the units. That's what, so that is your brief school primer on the finance side. There, I'm sure there's a lot of unanswered questions in this, and as we get more information, this is something we can bring back to you. But are there any questions on what we do have?
Do we want to move, do we want to do council questions after each of these presentations, or do you want to wait until all presentations have finished to ask questions?
I think we should do the presentations.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, so the next, the next presentation will be Tom and Ralph, who will be talking about different options, and as Kathy very, put out very well is that there is a lot of questions that are still left to be answered, but there's also a lot of opportunities, given the fact that we're working with such a new development. And, you know, the question is ultimately, well, how are we going to create the best education system in Brisbane for all the students who are in this area? And so what we had Ralph and Tom do is look at different options and talk about, he, they can go through those options and talk about the pros and cons of how do we create the best education available for people.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Ralph Ocho of the Ocho and More Law Firm. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. And in considering the time and the speakers you have, I'll try to be brief. Excuse me, the project was to ascertain, I am very hoarse, so I, please excuse me. The impact on the school district says, the deputy manager had mentioned previously, what's the impact of the schools in the vicinity? Because as was previously mentioned, on the financial presentation, there are differences in jurisdiction, number of students, et cetera. So there are different points of view. The document, the report that you've reviewed and studied in some instances, what does it do? The thing that it doesn't do, it doesn't make the decision for the direction that the city of Brisbane or the school district of Brisbane should take. It, it outlines a number of the possibilities that are available, some more difficult than others. All of them are possible, but there are a number of criteria that have to be met statutorily. That's the first instance. Also, the report outlines by comparison on each one of the possibilities, if you will, the advantages and the disadvantages. Some of the disadvantages come because of the complexity of what you have to do to accomplish that, but it may be outweighed, obviously, by the advantage. When the decision is made as to which direction the council and the Board of Education in Brisbane want to take, there are a number of other issues other than just meeting the criteria. And, and Tom Griffin, who is my colleague, will talk more specifically about those. Because you have multiple school districts that you're dealing with, as mentioned, jurisdictions are different, and the number of students that they have are different. Ethnically, the mix is different also. They have different points of view. Mr. Griffin and I were fortunate enough to be able to talk with the superintendents of these districts, and they have good programs, they're proud of them, they've worked hard to bring them into existence, and the initial reaction we got was that the status quo was We were able to bring to their attention that the whole notion with the Baylands and the opportunities, as has been mentioned, that, that are offered, it's important to be as, why is this possible in looking into the future? Not only on the finances, on what it brings, but what other resources are available. One of them is here at tonight's Skyline College to talk about how they could create a very robust magnet type of a school if the decision were to have a Brisbane High School. So those are some of the things that, that need to be looked at. And in our discussion with those superintendents, we were trying to get them to look very carefully at the projection of the number of students, obviously, as previously mentioned by the previous speaker, depending on what types of residents are there, what kind of tax revenue is going to be coming in, how many families in what income bracket can afford those, and how many children will be coming in. You're looking from eight to 15 years out, that there will be a number of students that we believe in projections will fill the vacancies at Jefferson Union and also at Bay Shore Elementary. Whether the school directors, trustees, et cetera, and their superintendents want to look out that far or continue their projects as is, is something that isn't in the criteria that you have to look at. But it's important because many of the issues that you'll be looking at that are outside of what the document reports are the political issues. Whether you can persuade the superintendents, the members of those boards of education, their trustees, that looking into the future, working in regional capacities may bring certain opportunities to those schools, the students and families that currently do not exist. And, and those are some of the things that you really need to look at very carefully, but it's important to start as early as possible, because there are families, in addition to trustees that are elected and whatnot, and the superintendents, there are families that don't want change. And that's something I know you're aware of, but those points of view, those perspectives are not going to change unless there's a proactive campaign, and I mean that in the very positive sense, to know what the talking points are, the benefits, and talk to as many of those persons as possible, especially those that are in decision-making positions. There's also, excuse me, the issue, if, if you follow any one of those directions that are outlined in the report, there are statutory criteria that have to be met. Tom Griffin will talk about those, we've mentioned it previously. Those criteria have to be met substantially, not exactly. And that's an advantage to the persons or the entities that are making the proposal or proposition. But once you have met, let's say, once you meet that criteria, then you do have the county committee. There are members on that board, obviously. They accept the position or the proposal, they evaluate it, and then they make a judgment. One of the philosophies, if you will, of that committee, that commission, is not to do harm to existing school districts. That can mean a number of different things. So again, making sure that you visit, educate, persuade as many members of those other districts as possible so that they are recognized and hopefully accept what Brisbane wants to do in the direction that they decide to take is really important. Other issues have been mentioned, but they are critical, I think, to mention again, and that is, if the direction is to have a Brisbane High School because of the opportunity that the Baylands will offer, you saw the information on the possible projections of the finances. The other thing to consider, though, also, are the families in Brisbane and others who might be coming to a robust academic setting, a magnet type of a school, is how many students would be there. We believe certainly that the number of the students in that student body would grow in the six to, 16 years ahead. I might mention that just from my own personal experience with schools is, I went to a high school that had 1,000 all-male students, and it offered, in Southern California, it was Loyola High School, with the Jesuits, and it offered all the sports, and it was a high, robust academic institution. I also attended, in my first two years of high school, I saw that was only 350 students. That was very specialized, but again, it was very much focused on high academics. There were sports, but there were no, it was all intramural. And lastly, I would offer that, I've had the honor and privilege of being on the board as I am currently on this school, Crystal Ray in Sacramento, and that is one of the system of 33 schools, Crystal Ray, and that's where the students, and then that's co-ed, there are 376 students currently on that campus. And they go to school for academic classes four days a week, and then one day a week they work in a professional setting so that the students are exposed to a number of different careers. and professions, et cetera. And those sponsors, if you will, pay the tuition for those students who are low-income. But 90% of them have been able to get into four-year colleges and universities with most of them all scholarship paid. So, and that particular school, Crystal Ray, before we got into the new campus two years ago, was located in an elementary school run by the Sacramento Catholic Diocese. And it was pretty dilapidated. But they offered football. Two years later, in the new school, the football program no longer exists. But they have a very successful soccer program, both for the young women and the young men. And I might say that we were able to get the money together to get, and then this is a private school, but it's low-income families. So you have to remember the fundraising is even more difficult than if you're in a high-income school. But we were able to get a soccer field, even with lights, et cetera. And in the morning of a particular day about two months ago, we inaugurated that soccer field. And in the evening, the boys' soccer team won their conference. So, and that's only with 376 students co-ed. So those things are certainly possible if there's a will. It's not easy and there are certain students, as you well know, I think that you'll recognize it even more specifically when Skyline makes their presentation. Because if you are associated, your high school, with a college, there are incredible opportunities that come with that. And there are different programs. Some community colleges in particular, because state law now has mandated and put money up for community colleges to do innovative programs. Some are mere high school associations and there are classes that are afforded to the students who want to be there. Others are imminently more well-planned out and they are incredible. Colleges and universities recognize those programs. Again, it's a real attraction to the families and the students in Brisbane. If that's a direction that you choose. The county committee, again, I just want to stress, irrespective of which one of the alternatives that you might choose, you're going to meet a decision and a judgment by the county committee. So it's important to let them know as early as possible what you're thinking, what the progress is, what the obstacles are, how you're working, how you're working with the other schools. And one way to avoid a problem, I think Mr. Griffin will talk about that, again, is there are a couple of the alternatives that are mentioned in the report that can be accomplished without a formal reorganization. And that's by an administrative negotiated plan or agreement. That can happen. Again, the report is not to say what we think Brisbane city ought to do, but there's information there. And the politics after the decision is made is also very important in the sense of continuing to have the community know what you're doing and also the different decision-makers that are going to evaluate what the decision is so that none of the districts in the region are heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph. And thank you, ladies and gentlemen, Madam Mayor. I think the council needs to be commended for getting into this. In one sense, I guess, you might be criticized because you're quote meddling, unquote, in school district affairs and the school district is not under your jurisdiction. But the fact is, this, all of this discussion would not have occurred without the city council getting into it. And I think the result can only be better education, not only for the children of the Baylands, but the children of Brisbane and the other children of the surrounding area. We got into this, I guess, because of the implications for school district reorganization. And we've done a lot of that over the years. As you know, school districts, from top to bottom, are either unified, that is K-12 or pre-K through 12th grade, or they're split in their jurisdiction with an elementary district with pre-K through eight and a high school district of nine through 12. A reorganization is any change in that structure. It's a unification where an elementary and a high school district will merge to become K-12. And it includes any transfer of territory between districts of the same kind. Transfer of territory between two elementary districts or between two high school districts or between two unified school districts. And it also includes the merger of districts of the same kind. A merger of two elementary districts or a merger of two high school districts. It seems to me that reorganization is not an objective in itself. It is a solution to a problem. And you have to keep in mind what it is you want to accomplish. What is the problem that you want to solve? And determine, excuse me, and determine whether the reorganization is necessary or one of the options, one of the ways of meeting that problem. We identified in our report to you, and I hope you've had a chance to look it over, there are at least 12 options. From the, starting with the status quo, which of course is an option, you have a choice of leaving the situation as it is now with the Baylands in the Bay Shore Elementary School District and the Jefferson High School District and of course, the rest of the city of Brisbane in the Brisbane Elementary School District. You can leave that status quo alone. With that alternative, as well as all of the others, there are advantages and some disadvantages. Not all of the options will take care of or satisfy the objectives that we have heard as being laid out for why we need to look at this. And some of the, some of the options will accomplish that to a greater degree than others. My personal, if I can interject, my personal recommendation. My favorite option is number four. Negotiate an agreement between the existing districts. And that includes the Bay Shore Elementary School District, the Brisbane Elementary School District, perhaps, and the Jefferson Union High School District. The program that we've been talking about, that has been talked about, really world-class K or pre-K through 12th grade, through grade 14 program, that is really a world-class program, can be accomplished, well, it can be accomplished and it can be accomplished by an agreement among the various districts and the city and the developer. And any of the options can be accomplished by agreement or by, and if an agreement doesn't work, if the districts don't want to agree, then you can press forward with a kind of a reorganization. The process of reorganization is outlined in the report. And if it's, if you think it's very complicated, that's because that's what it is. It can start, it starts with a petition. And a petition can be filed either by the owner of property, undeveloped property. So the developer now at some point can file a petition to transfer the Baylands development to somebody else from Bay Shore to Brisbane, for example, or to unify it as a separate district or whatever. It can be done by a petition signed by 25% of the registered voters in the affected districts. Or it can be done on a petition signed by 10% of the registered voters or others, including the city council. The city council can petition the County Committee on School District Organization to change the configuration of districts in some way. The problem with that option, with that alternative to, of, way of starting the process is that if the, if the county committee has to consider the matter, has to do a study, but they can turn it down. And if they turn it down, there's no appeal. If the 25% petition process is started, then if the county committee turns it down, there's the possibility of the appeal to the State Board of Education. But, but the county committee, as Ralph said, is very loath to adopt a reorganization that will damage one of the existing school districts. So a process where all of the districts agree and the city agrees is a way of accomplishing what you want to accomplish if you're clear about what it is you want to accomplish. I think instead of, unless you want me to go through all of the alternatives, I'd be better off, I think, focusing on your questions and which options are more appealing to you. And I think as we do this, some of the options clearly won't work. They're legally possible, but they will accomplish some of the options, but not all of them. And are politically desirable, perhaps, to a greater or lesser degree than others. But there are all kinds of ways of accomplishing what you want to accomplish if you're clear about what it is you want to accomplish. And so you need to consider that, what you want to push. And it's important that this be a grassroots effort. You need to hear from your parents and your community. What do they want to see in the Baylands? You don't have Baylands residents to ask, but you do have Brisbane residents to ask, obviously, if they're going to participate in this Brisbane educational program. I'd be pleased to respond to any questions you might have. But you can read the report as easily as I can. And so we don't have to do that. You can, I won't tell you, I won't give you the lawyer joke behind my conclusion that virtually anything you want to do is legally possible. And whatever you want to do, there's a way of doing it legally and accomplishing what it is you want to do. So I'd be pleased to respond to questions. Sorry, I'm kind of gimpy here. I've had one surgery on my hip, too many.
Oh.
That's what happens.
I think we'll wait till the end, right? Hear our last presentation and then we can chime in with questions.
The next presentation is from Skyline College.
I was going to attempt to present right here.
You need a mic, though.
Well, yeah, you need a mic. Yeah, yeah, we do.
So, good evening, Mayor, council members and community of Brisbane County. On behalf of Chancellor Ron Galatolo, the San Mateo County Community College District, and President Regina Stanbeck Stroud at Skyline College, we're excited to talk to you today about potential educational opportunities and models for us to collaborate and partner as we move forward, trying to bridge Skyline and Brisbane. Our presentation is expanding connections across our community. And what we're really want you to think about and envision tonight is what would it look like to have an innovation center of Skyline College in the Baylands? And what would that entail? What kind of programs will we offer? And so we're going to take, envision tonight what potentially that can look like and give you an opportunity to ask some questions. So we're going to first talk about what this concept of a liberal arts extension. When we think of liberal arts, you know, we think about strengthening connections to post-secondary education and degree completion. We think about how do we go about increasing access and relevancy to quality education and what does that mean? And then this idea of advocacy and agency and increased engagement in your community. There's been a lot of work about liberal arts and liberal studies. Is it dying? Is it not? Has it turned to gen ed? What do you do? And we believe at Skyline College, we've been able to do this really well. We've been able to really help students look and examine real-world problems through an interdisciplinary lens. And we're really excited about how we're doing this with our dual enrollment program, and we'll talk a little bit about that. We also are excited about our liberal studies because how do we begin to offer research opportunities and get students engaged very early on, even at that high school level? And what does it look like to do research and be that investigator as a 14, 15-year-old? We're really also excited just about even service learning and community engagement. How do you begin to give back to the community through a liberal arts and a general education pathway? So at Skyline, we think we're doing a fabulous job with our students and we want to even begin this early on. And so as we're thinking of partnerships, well, this is what we think about when we think about liberal ed, liberal arts. It's just not about general education. You take one class here in this category and one class here and there. But it really looks at writing, critical thinking, quantitative reasoning, research. And it thinks about how do we begin to solve real-world problems? How do we engage in this? Okay? So just not general ed what we're doing. We're very fortunate at Skyline College to have several associate of arts degrees and associate of science degrees, in particular with our California State University, but also our University of California system, which is really exciting. And so what I wanted to do is just kind of list a few there for you so you can kind of see how students are being able to be engaged. We're super excited that our most recent degree is our social justice studies degree, which is amazing. Students are so excited about this opportunity because this can lead to several things, right? It could lead to law, it could even lead to medical school, several things. So as you, as you look up there, you see that we're not only, you know, responding to our community needs, but giving students a good opportunity to engage in computer science and public health and various things. And we get, we're going to talk a little bit more about CTE right now. And so I'm going to have our wonderful Director of Workforce and Career Programs, Andrea Visner, talk about that. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about the model.
Thank you so very much, Dr. Taylor Mendoza. And I'm definitely shorter, so I had to make the quick adjustment. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you this evening. It was very exciting to hear some of the conversation earlier around some of the themes that could move forward in this type of partnership. In career education, we're doing a lot of work, I'm like, okay. We're doing a lot of work to be responsive to the workforce, especially in Silicon Valley and our neighboring areas. Some of the work that we've done most recently is really focusing on UX design and the user experience. So working with our art faculty as well as the computer side to create programs that are responsive to industry. And so when you think about the types of high schools or dual enrollment kinds of models, students could literally do their entire high school experience, earning college credit, and then also focusing in different types of themes that might get them excited about their future in ways that would connect them to jobs here in Silicon Valley and the surrounding areas, and also potentially economic growth here in Brisbane. So some of the other areas that we're really expanding in is the area of just some of the larger growth areas of employment, sales and marketing management, human resources management, retail management as well, and then of course, teacher prep pathways. We have a model this year that we rolled out at Oceana where students move through in one year of their high school, where they earn a teacher permit, a career certificate, and about 10 units of college credit. And so our goal at the institution is to really think about how can we partner with high schools or cities to how can we partner with high schools or cities to create educational experiences where ultimately high school students are going through their high school education and really moving through their first year of college simultaneously. So obviously the impacts of that are, you know, reduced debt as they're moving through their educational journey. We do have a Promise program at the college that my colleague will talk about in just a moment. But ultimately, it really does allow them to get their, their first two years of college free while doing their high school. We also have an early college model, our middle college programming, where high school students currently do come to Skyline College in 11th and 12th grade and they are moving through their high school experience simultaneously with their college experience. And they are moving through at about 85% of the students with their, a year and a half of college behind their belt while they finish out their graduation requirements. And so it's really engaging students to think differently about what their future looks like and that they are college-ready and really, you know, creating a much more of an aspirational type of experience for students. We've done some work as well with South San Francisco Unified School District and their partnership with Genentech. They have the Science Garage. So there's also different types of themes very specific to different types of occupations, whether it be, you know, STEM but focusing on biotechnology, computer science and a variety of things and really treating them like an academy. So you're moving through your high school education, but you're also again moving through certificates and degrees at the college level. And so there's, much of the work is happening at the college around funding that's received most recently through legislation around strong workforce dollars. And so we've been really thrilled to be able to advance a lot of this work through that. Models of delivery include face-to-face, online, hybrid. I mean, there is a lot of research and a bunch of different cool things that are happening in the space around really creating learning commons for students and so that they're engaging in their educational journey differently than what you may have seen 10, 15 years ago and definitely when I was in high school. So we are definitely responsive to the different types of models of education and creating really meaningful learning environments where students are successful, but also using the things that they're actually engaging with in their real life, that beautiful cellphone and other types of tools to be able to engage. In addition to that, we have a variety of wraparound services that with whatever type of environment we can create to partner, that there are services that our institution can bring along to support student success. And our learning centers, supplemental instruction. So really looking at how we're supporting, especially high school environments with students and having tutors and kind of classroom support. Our Spark Point Services have, having opportunities for access to groceries and addressing foods insecurity issues and things like that. And then of course, counseling and guidance and really having specialized support around that. And most recently, we're super excited about the work that we're doing around career development and job placement. Our institution is leading across our district around ensuring that students aren't only moving through our institution to get a certificate or a degree and then moving on to a four-year institution, but they're actually preparing themselves in the types of skills and engagements that they would need to be successful, to be best prepared for jobs. And then most specifically, internships and then high-quality placement as a result of their experience at the institution. And so I share that only because there are elements of that that could be weaved into the design of how this partnership could look. With that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Sherry, my colleague, Sherry Colleen, to share a little bit about the Student Voice and the Promise Program. Thank you so very much.
Good evening. So nice to see all of your faces somewhere other than the President's Breakfast once a year. By the way, it's coming up on March 21st. Love to have you all there. So this evening, what I'm going to talk to you about is the Promise Scholars Program. And I'm particularly excited about this because it's sort of taken our institution and turned it upside down. So this is a population that we are trying some new avenues to really increase student success and student completion. And then the hope is to learn from this program and then scale those things that are working to increase student completion out to the general population. So what I have here is, this is our Promise Scholars Program. And what we say is, we've got your back, we've got your books, and we've got your degree free. So that's our sort of tagline. So it's all part of sort of a reimagining of the institution. Many, many institutions across the country are just like us where they've actually pulled their graduation numbers and said, oh my gosh, that is not good enough. And there's all sorts of reasons, you know, why graduation numbers can be low. Ours was about 13%. Of course, it's a multiple-mission institution and you can explain it away, but the, the truth of the matter is that we can do better. And so we initiated several years ago, about three years ago, our promise. And so I have to do the umbrella. They, they always laugh at me. I do the umbrella. The all-over promise is our promise to students. How do we help them get into the institution? How do we help them move through and how do we help them graduate? And not in 10 years and not in six years. How about three? Or even two? So we, we reimagined what the institution could look like if we just break down one barrier after another. Why do we lose students? Why do students not even complete the application to start college? Because it's horrible. I tried it myself. I got confused. And it's a state application. So what, what is under our locus of control and what is not? So what we're doing is changing everything that's within our sphere of influence to break down those barriers one by one. So the three buckets of areas we're looking at as an institution are through transformative teaching and learning. And I don't mean just in the classroom, but also how we deliver student services as well. Guided pathways and meta-majors. Clustering those 100 degrees and certificates that look so daunting when you look at the catalog and you're 18-years-old and you're supposed to decide what you want to do for the rest of your life and you're looking at it and thinking, I have no idea. But providing counseling when that student gets in to say, well, if you're more of an arts and communication person, why don't you start to take classes in this meta-major, the arts and communication meta-major? And then you can move from degree to degree within that meta-major a lot more easily because we've now aligned all those pathways. Then we have the Promise Scholars Program, which is what I'm going to talk to you today. But I wanted you to have a picture that it's about the overall umbrella promise. But like, I have, I'm a visual person. So, why did we start this three years ago? So we, we looked at some research and Dr. Angelica Garcia is our Vice President of Student Services and she brought this model to us saying, hey, look, they, they are doing amazing things at the CUNY system in New York. This is the City University of New York. And their city is actually funding it. And they have what they call the ASAP program. So it's Associated Studies in Associate Programs. And they have doubled graduation rates over their 10-plus years of having this program. It's a very specific model and it was a little bit difficult over the last few years to make it fit into the restrictions we have in California per the California Ed Code, all kinds of things like that. But they worked with us very closely and we were the first California institution to adopt this model. So here's the numbers of graduation rates. You can see the success rates. So what we did was, we said, what are the components of this? And the first two years we started the Promise Scholars Program, we did parts of the ASAP program and a scholarship. And now, starting with Fall 2018 cohort, which is 507 students, we rolled out the full program. It took us three years to get here. A lot of hard work, a lot of blood, sweat and tears. And luckily, we're able to share that with our sister institutions at Colleges San Mateo and Kenyatta College. And now they are rolling out Promise Scholars Programs as well. So these are the different buckets that we provide support under. It really is a comprehensive program. It's financial support, academic support, student services. But there are expectations as well on the student's side of what they must do. They have to commit to full-time enrollment. And so part, part of the reason for providing such aggressive financial support is that they can go full-time and meaning 12 to 15 units so they can hit that 60 units and graduate in, in two years. So, you guys can read this. Monthly transportation incentive is huge, whether that be a Clipper card or a gas card because it's sort of difficult to get to our college. And we recognize that. A book voucher to offset the cost of books and materials. And many students have had their entire books and materials paid for. Blocked courses. The main difference, I would say, between Promise Programs throughout the, the, the state that you hear about and our program is that we have a counselor ratio of 150 to 1. So meaning every time I walk in to see a, an academic counselor, I don't see somebody different each time. I know my counselor is Kim Davalos and she knows me. She knows my story. She knows my strengths. She knows what meta-major I'm in. And she's even, you know, researched some about that. And she knows what my educational plan is. So if I get off track a little bit, she has all that background knowledge to help me get right back on track. And it's a need-based model, meaning that some students need to see their counselor more often and some students don't need to see their counselor as often. So we actually do an assessment of how often they need to see. So anyway, it's really comprehensive. Happy to take any questions about it. So like I said, we started in 2016 with 139 students, 253 in 2017. And this year was the full ASAP replication model with 507 new students. Next year, we hope to increase that to 750 students. So from the pilot cohorts, this is just some of the data as far as persistence, meaning the rate at which students continue in, in college. So you can see the comparison groups. We're seeing gains. And the comparison group is like a statistically relevant group that our, our Planning Research and Institutional Effectiveness Office has defined. And sometimes they shift a little. So, amazing gains. And then this is just some demographics, who are our current Promise Scholars. 63% are first generation, 70% receive the BOG Fee Waiver or CCPG. That Promise word gets thrown around a lot. It's another Promise word, but basically it's financial aid. And they're taking 14.7. That's their mean load, which is good. We're trying to get them over that 12-unit mark, up to 15. That's our goal. And 78% have enrolled in transfer level, 50% are on transfer math. So gives you an idea of who they are. This is just a little quote from one of the students, Norman, who transferred over to San Jose State University. And he says that the Promise Scholars Program made my first year at Skyline a smooth transition. I did not have to worry about paying for books or in classes. I was able to lay out my whole education plan at Skyline so that I would graduate on time. That was something that I truly loved. And now I've got a little video. We were unable to secure a student. It is a very busy time of year because I talked to about 20 of them and they would all have been fabulous. But I have a video for you so you can hear a student voice, somebody who went through the program.
A desire to attend college was merely an afterthought for Athena Mendoza. Growing up, Athena was confronted with bullying and harassment from peers, coupled by depression, anxiety and panic attacks, leading to her insecurity about educational institutions.
I felt like I did not belong there for any type of reason, for education or anything at all. Nothing was going right at all. So I felt really out of place.
Athena found the inner strength to escape these demons and challenged herself to graduate from high school. While along this path, she was introduced to the Skyline College Promise Scholars Program and its Summer Scholars Institute, which changed her outlook towards education.
With all their activities and the classes and the instructors, everyone really kind of showed me support. They definitely made it so everyone can really get to know other people and to really create a community within the students who are attending the program.
Athena, like many of her peers, have benefited from the Skyline College Promise, which empowers students to complete college. The Skyline College Promise includes three signature acts: guided pathways, transformative teaching and learning, and the Promise Scholars Program.
The Skyline College Promise is a promise that we make to the students and this community that they will be able to get in, get through and graduate on time. These components really focus on removing financial barriers, making sure that there is a guided pathway and making sure that we're using contemporary teaching and learning strategies.
Through the strength of the Skyline College Promise, student persistent rates have increased since the inception of the program.
When we use the Skyline College Promise in order to support students' journey, then the institution itself is transformed.
Athena Mendoza is enjoying her first year at Skyline College. Through the efforts of Skyline College Promise, Athena has flourished and serves as a student ambassador. Her goal is to transfer to a four-year university and aspires to be a criminal investigator.
I'm really thankful that Skyline really pulled me from a dark place and into a better light. Skyline is definitely my safe place to help me have a successful future and to better myself.
Did you want us to stay up here for questions at this time or would you?
I think that we're good. I'm going to see, you know, since we've had three presentations, there may be questions for you, but there may be questions for other presenters. So when it's appropriate, I'll have you guys come up. Side note, I'm a Skyline alum. So, so great to, to have you guys here. So thank you for coming. I think it, it might be good at this time to hear a little bit from the subcommittee giving a little bit of background because I know you've been working on this prior, of course, to us kind of reviewing all these materials. So if you wouldn't mind, kind of just filling us in from, from the subcommittee perspective.
Sure, sure, Madam Mayor. Thank you. You know, it's unfortunate that Councilmember Conway's not here with me tonight. You know, he's my partner on the, the school subcommittee, two-by-two. But, you know, in December, we had a subcommittee two-by-two meeting here at City Hall. And we were receiving the draft study plan from the consultants. You know, all of our, our subcommittee meetings are, are public. And so because this issue is really, really important to the community, we made a very strong effort to reach out to our citizens. We also contacted the, the different school districts to have them come and, and hear this information. We also had a presentation from Dr. Mendoza, which was awesome. Thank you, Jennifer, for that. And then, you know, but from that, that subcommittee meeting, there was a lot of questions from, from the community. And so that's when I decided to have an office hours meeting on this subject matter in, in January. And so citizens came to, to City Hall and we talked about the, the study and they had lots of questions. And, you know, and that feedback that came from the citizens from the two-by-two meeting as well as my office hours meeting went to the consultants. And, you know, the community feedback was reflected in what they finally presented to us. You know, a few weeks, I guess maybe about two and a half weeks ago, I, I went to the Bayshore School. I had reached out to Superintendent Dr. Pittman. You know, the Bayshore School District is in the Baylands. And she's the superintendent and it's important to me for, you know, to understand what is her vision? And, you know, she has been very influential in creating this amazing school, the new, the new K-8 Bayshore School. And I heard a lot about the school. I had never seen it before. So I asked her, can I get a tour? And so we met and, and the meeting was, was fabulous. It was very, you know, productive and, you know, we talked a lot about community. You know, what's, you know, how important is, is, you know, our schools to communities? And of course, they're extremely important. You know, they're the, you know, probably almost the number one thing that, that really, you know, is the glue that keeps communities together and strengthens communities. And, and that school was, was dynamite. I mean, we, we walked, you know, around the campus and, you know, the, that, that school is such a vision from Dr. Pittman. You know, she is really smart in helping the financials for that school to be. And then all of the, you know, the different components of innovative learning. You know, you could see, you know, she had a major imprint on that. And so, you know, I'm really looking forward to working with her and, and the school board of Bayshore as well as the, the, the school district of Brisbane and the Jefferson Union High School District. I think one of the things that was brought up multiple times this evening was working together. And how important that is to, that all of the students within our communities, you know, have the opportunity to benefit from this Baylands development. And really, you know, by working together, we are all better off. And so, yeah, I just hope that Dr. Pittman can be a leader in helping our two communities, Brisbane and Bayshore, to, you know, to provide the best educational opportunities possible.
Well, thank you so much for that recap. I anticipate that there may be quite a few questions and some discussion. I think actually at this time, it's appropriate that the council takes a quick two-minute break just so that we can prepare for that discussion. So we will adjourn the meeting for a short break and be back in a few minutes.